Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 13th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. And this morning, we have Pastor Brian Foster. Ladies and the... Did I get it right?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Pastor. And then followed by the pleasure of ladies. Those who are willing and able, please stand.
Join me as we pray. Father God, we thank you for this great country. We thank you for the men and women who serve it so diligently and so well. Father, would you just bless and give us your guidance as we make decisions for where we live and for what we do? Thank you for our leadership, and Lord, guide them as they lead us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you both. And what I'd also like to do this morning, Chief Justice Harris Hines will be laid to his eternal rest this afternoon. So if we could just have a brief moment of silence for that, I think I would really appreciate that, as I'm sure his family would. And may flights of angels guide him to his rest. All right, we have a number of presentations this morning. We're going to start out with the Third Quarter Customer Service Excellence Awards for two outstanding employees on behalf of Cobb County Customer Service Council. For that...
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners, Rob, and special guests. On behalf of the Customer Service Council, it is my privilege to present our third quarter winners of the Cobb County Customer Service Excellence Award. Today, we will recognize five employees who go beyond the call of duty when it comes to providing customer service excellence. David George, the Facilities Maintenance Supervisor for the Department of Public Safety, is today's first honoree. According to David's supervisor, he is always finding innovative ways to streamline processes for their facilities and their interaction with other departments. David can also be found helping fleet management and property management fill work orders that fall outside of the scope of his required work. Thanks for scoring one for customer service, David. We are proud of you. Next up, we have Charlene Tisdale. Charlene is an administrative specialist in the Criminal Investigation Unit at Precinct One. Whether Charlene is teaching people how to properly use software, creating cheat sheets, or assisting Kennesaw's Police Department to create a daily activity report for their CID unit, customer service is her top priority. If you visit Precinct One, you might even see her jumping in to help with the front counter when needed. Thanks for hitting a home run for customer service, Charlene. Richard Bailey is our next award winner. Richard works in information services. Richard was selected for this award because he always goes beyond what his position requires. He doesn't just see things from an IS perspective. He goes out, speaks to folks that use the programs regarding their needs, and then finds ways to best fit the program's abilities to meet the needs of the customer. Thanks for being a high scorer for customer service, Richard. Our next two honorees come to us from the library system. First up is Susan Foster. Susan helped create the PAST program, which gives Cobb and Marietta students access to the library at the library home or in the classroom. She finds ways to pull together last-minute requests for reading program supplies and has received many complimentary letters about her customer service. Great job keeping your eye on the goal of customer service excellence, Susan. Thank you. Intrica Foster is our final honoree this morning. Intrica suggested the Sibley Branch be an official viewing location for The Eclipse. She has hosted events that are outside of her job responsibilities, such as Dragons Love Tacos and So Do We, and volunteers to help with outreach events. Intrica also mentors other library employees. Keep up the great work, and thanks for making the touchdown for customer service. Please give these outstanding employees another round of applause.
Now Commissioner Burrow will present a proclamation to the Daughters of the American Revolution in recognition of National American Indian Heritage Month.
Good morning. Wanda Patterson, who is the Chair of the American Indian Committee. And she has with her today Marilyn and Ann from the Daughters of the American Revolution. I'm sure most of you didn't realize, and I didn't either, that the Daughters of the American Revolution also honor our Native American Indians for American Indian Heritage Month. And today, we have a proclamation, and then Wanda's going to tell us a little bit about her committee and what all they do. Whereas, the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as a part of rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in Cobb County, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This is the 13th day of November, 2018.
You may be surprised to know that the Daughters of the American Revolution are involved with issues having to do with American Indians. We support two American Indian colleges. We provide scholarships for Indian youth, and we send Indian children to a special summer camp, which instills pride in their heritage and in the heritage of the United States. And we appreciate the Board of Commissioners joining us in recognizing the National American Indian Heritage Month.
Thank you. Do you want to introduce yourself to the group?
Hello, my name is Marilyn Carol Palmer. I'm a member of DAR, which is one of the largest, or the largest, women's service organizations in the world.
Good morning, I'm Ann Amy, Vice Regent of our chapter. You may be aware that we support American patriotism, education, and historic preservation, not just commemorating physical buildings or graves, but historical events and Native people as well.
Thank you, ladies, for all that you do. And now we'll hit a picture.
Congratulations, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burrow, and thank you for the members of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation to this recognizing small businesses in the county and also in America. And attending today in support of the county's small businesses are the Cobb Chamber, members of the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, Cobb Chamber Area Councils, the Cobb Business Coalition, including representation from Cobb's many local associations, business associations, several small local business associations. So we'd ask all of you to come up as I make this proclamation and present to you. Well, good morning. A lot of "whereas" is here, so be patient. Whereas Cobb County celebrates local small business and the contributions they make to our community by creating jobs and boosting the economy. According to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the county, in the country, and they represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees. And whereas, from 2000 to 2017, small businesses were responsible for nearly 66% of net new jobs created. Small businesses also employ 47.5% of U.S. employees in the private sector. And whereas, Small Business Saturday is held after Thanksgiving, one of the busiest shopping days of the year. This day is supported by advocacy groups, as well as public and private organization across the country. 90% of consumers say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and 89% of consumers who are aware of the day say it encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas, 73% of consumers who shopped at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with family or friends. The most reported reason for shopping at these businesses was to support their community. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday in Cobb County, and urge all residents to support small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year, given this 13th day of November, 2018. Congratulations. I'll let Sharon Mason, the CEO of the Cobb Chamber, make the first comments. I'll have you all introduce yourselves, all right?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the county's partnership, the business associations, working with the Chamber. Small business is the heart of our community, the backbone of our community, and we are so proud of the many success stories in this community, and look forward to continuing to expand all the great support we do for small businesses. And we've seen a lot of small businesses expanding in Cobb, because this is the place to be. And y'all do such a wonderful job at the county of making sure this is the right kind of environment where businesses can thrive. So thank you for your partnership and your support.
Hi, I'm Tracy Halsey with Cobb County Economic Development.
And I'm Roseanne Hall. I'm a Realtor with Atlanta Communities, and I'm here representing Northeast Cobb Business Association and the East Cobb Business Association.
Bill Stare with I-360 Group. We own and operate a digital marketing agency. And did you know that there are nine business associations in Cobb County that are regional? Roseanne mentioned two of them, but there are nine, so one in each part of the county.
I'm Marcellus Williams. I'm with Cobb County Economic Development.
Dana Johnson, Community Development.
Michael Hughes, Cobb County Economic Development.
It's not a real proclamation without a photo.
Here, yes, you need to be in the middle. Another reach for a shot.
She wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, Commissioner Cupid. They somehow changed it around, so you're number four now.
Good morning. I have the opportunity today to recognize the excellent work of our Department of Family and Children's Services here in Cobb, and recognition of November being National Adoption Month. And even as I proceed to give this award, my heart is truly full, as I had opportunity to speak with the Director of the Organization and learn about her heart towards our families and our children here, but also the need for us to have a web of support in Cobb County for our most vulnerable children who are in the foster care system. So with that, I have great honor to present this proclamation. Whereas families have always stood at the center of our society, preserving good and worthy traditions from our past, and entrusting those traditions to our children, our greatest hope for the future. At a time when many fear that the family is in decline, it is fitting that we give special recognition to those who are rebuilding families by promoting adoption. And whereas Cobb County recognizes the critical importance of helping children find permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption. In Georgia, there are more than 14,000 children in the foster care system. Nationwide, there are more than 120,000 foster children waiting for their forever families. And whereas November is recognized as National Adoption Awareness Month. While all adoption-related issues are important, the focus of this month is the adoption of children currently in foster care. And adoption provides a child with a lifelong positive connection, one of life's greatest gifts. And whereas this month also includes National Adoption Day, traditionally a Saturday, which is observed in courthouses throughout the nation, where thousands of adoptions are finalized simultaneously. And whereas, adoption provides a unique experience that positively impacts children and enriches the lives of adoptive families. Last, but not least, let us pay tribute to those special families who have opened up their homes and their hearts to adopted children forming bonds that we call family. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as National Adoption Month. In doing so, we urge all citizens in the national effort to raise awareness of the importance of adoption for foster children and all children needing safe, loving families, presented this 13th day of November, 2018. Would you like to share some words with us this morning?
Good morning, I am Lysandra Bodie. I am the County Director for Cobb County Department of Family and Children's Services. I'm going to introduce a few people that I brought with me. Immediately to my left are Brendan and Evelyn Rutherford. They are one of our foster parents, recent adoptive parents for Cobb County DFACS. We have our Resource Development Supervisor, Danielle Farley, and my Deputy Director, Carmen Nance. And so we want to thank you again, Commissioner Cupid, for this proclamation. We, as an organization, are always looking for families to step up to be that support system for our kids. We have over 500 kids in the foster care system within Cobb County alone, and we only have 99 foster homes. And so that means that a lot of our kids are placed outside of their community, outside of their network that they know. So we brought some information that we placed at the back of the room, and that we're also sharing with some of the Commissioners, just to get the word out. You know, our kids are our future. We are here to support them and make sure they have the services they need to be productive. But I want to give just a few moments to Mr. and Mrs. Rutherford, just to share the importance to them of fostering and adopting.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brandon Rutherford. This is my wife, Everlyn Rutherford. And thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for having us. Just wanted to say that we had the pleasure of fostering and adopting two precious little boys, Jalen and Christian, earlier this year in March. And it's been an amazing just opportunity to not only be a blessing in their lives, but we also have grown exponentially just through our capacity to love and our capacity to be able to just, you know, care for, you know, children and care for people through this whole process. So we've had amazing support from Cobb DFACS, and they're actually an extension of our family. And my wife's getting teary-eyed up here now. But, you know, we just want to encourage, if you've ever thought about it, if you're just looking to get more information, please, you know, look deeper into it. It's an amazing opportunity to change a child's life.
I'm Danielle Farley. I am the Resource Development Supervisor for Cobb County Foster Homes.
And again, I'm Carmen Nance, the Deputy Director with Cobb DFACS.
Before we take a picture, I just want to share how going through the process of this proclamation has really touched my heart, as I have two children. And we think about all that we do to pour into our children and to create whole, healthy beings every day. I think about my two boys and the work I sometimes have to do to encourage them in this walk of life and to raise their esteem every day. These connections that we have with our children mean something. And as I sat and listened to the numbers and the disparity in Cobb, we have children that are part of our Cobb community that are going without that connection each and every day. And while many of us may not see we have the time and the ability to reach out and assist, just think about what it would be like to travel in this world without that connection with someone who loves and cares about you each and every day. Not all of us may have the ability to adopt, but there are plenty of opportunities to serve and give back, whether it be through mentoring our youth who are in the system every day. It could be through volunteering at the center. They are receiving children every day. And even taking them to work, letting them see another opportunity of a life that they can have if they're in the unfortunate position of having to age out in the system. But I shared, I'm hoping this is the beginning of a beautiful relationship. I think in Cobb County, for us to have 90, only 99 families that are fostering and 500 kids in adoption, and we're in a county of 750,000, our babies are having to not only be disconnected from their homes, but also be disconnected from Cobb County because of that disparity. So my commitment is to see what we can do to make sure that we can help provide just a web of support. And I really want to thank those families. I see your eyes, and I'm just, I'm just appreciative of all you've done to step up and support. I can only imagine just how you've forever changed the lives of those two children and their children's children that will follow. So just thank you for following the call that was placed on your heart. Well, with that, we'll take a picture.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, and also thank you for the members of DFACS for all that you do to take care of, again, our future. The last presentation, I know the staff here is holding their breath, because we're going to do a virtual, a virtual program here. I don't know how it's virtual if I'm here, but we're going to, we're going to see how this works out here. The county's now launched a new website, a new portal to our website, and it offers a single location for our residents to find information and conduct online transactions with the county. This new design was based on resident and department feedback, and I'm sure it will be a significant improvement to the county. So with that, I'd like to ask Sharon Stanley to come up and walk me through this. Now make sure that when I walk through this portal, I come back.
So first, I want to just thank the web portal team. They've done a wonderful job in working with the vendor to get, put together what I think is going to be an award-winning website. This is part of the technology SLOSS that the citizens paid for. It's part of the Digital E-Government Initiative, which is to provide, help us to provide citizens with access to information and services anytime, anyplace, anywhere. And that's, we think, is a big step in that direction. Mike Lee, you'll see him in the video as well. So we're going to have a ribbon cutting for our new reveal, because we're not a building, we're not physical. So we thought that what we think was just as important. So we're going to have a ribbon cutting. So Chairman, we'll ask you to ask them to just start the video, and we'll go from there.
Well, the new CobbCounty.org is now live. It looks fantastic, and Mike Lee helped make the magic happen. Mike, how did this all start?
Well, Ross, the new website was part of the 2016 SLOSS program. The county issued an RFP, and a company by the name of Interpersonal Frequency out of Washington, DC, won the contract through a very competitive bidding process. Why don't we take a tour?
Let's do it.
Well, let's check out the new homepage. Visually, this is a very attractive homepage, but it's also functional under the hood. The navigation items are based on data, and the page design is mobile-friendly, and it'll change based on the kind of device being used to view it. The colors have proper contrast, and each item has special coding behind the scenes to make the site ADA compliant for visually impaired residents. Starting at the top, the navigation is section or topic-based, and it's listing our major sections. The board section includes the Board of Commissioners, the County Manager, County Attorney, and County Clerk. The department section will get you to our departments. And the courts is all of our courts in the county combined into one section. And public safety combines all of our public safety folks into one section. On the right, we have direct links to social media. Social media, of course, is critical to our communications needs. You'll find Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube at many places all over the site. And each page offers an opportunity to share its content with your friends on various platforms. Next, we have events and news. And then there's a link for our employees to access internal resources. And here, we have a translation feature that converts the website into many different languages. Below that, you'll find the community, services, doing business, I want to, and pay a bill links. And then you'll notice a very prominent search box. This is a powerful custom search tool that will quickly find anything related to county government, and it's designed to constantly improve and evolve over time. Moving down the homepage, we also have highlight items that feature important stories and events. Board and County Info, a new transparency center section. And this is going to give folks one-stop shopping for open records and various other areas related to government transparency. Below that, you'll find SLOSS, employment, contact, newsletter signup, and our Cobb TV livestream. Next is the News and Information section, updated frequently, and it'll keep you up to date on all the events associated with county government. Below that, we have our popular GIS items. And as you know, Ross, our GIS team was recently honored out in San Diego as being one of the best GIS departments in the country. And finally, down at the bottom, there's a footer area for additional items, links, and contact information that changes based on the section that you're on.
Well, that looks great, Mike. And as people will recognize when they go to the site, for now, there's a feedback banner at the very top, so you can click on that and give us your feedback about the new CobbCounty.org.
There you go. We're excited about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrow has a question, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Great job. When does the tutorial start? I'd just gotten used to the revised edition, and now I can't find anything.
This one's pretty easy to use. The nice thing about it is we're still partnering with the vendor. It'll continue to learn. The Google searches will get better, where they point you to the right things, and the search bar that we spoke about actually gets smarter as people go to it and it finds what they're looking for. So we'll be glad to come to your office and give you a tutorial. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid, I'm sorry.
This website has come such a long way over the past five and six years. I just went and copied a URL, and it was actually under 20 characters long. Before, when you copied a Cobb County URL, you were trying to tell someone where to go. It's like you had to speak in Greek to be able to do it. So I mean, just the convenient nature of that function alone is helpful, but I mean, it's a clean website. It looks great, and it's just a far cry from where we've come in the past six years.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank the team for doing this, and especially under your leadership, Mike. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good job. We will need a quick link for Panda Express, so. All right, we have a public comment now, I believe.
Yes, you have one speaker signed up. Roger Berkey, would you come forward, please?
Welcome back, Roger.
This is awkward, only one speaker.
But you're the best.
Well, I first want to say how much I appreciate your recognition of these employees, because when you go to deal with county government, you're looking forward to an awful experience, and you get these folks who are just so nice and help you out, and you leave wondering, did I really go to the county? So they deserve all the appreciation they got. And I want to say a few things about something we need to save, and that is what wild lands we have left. I started here, moved to Cobb County in '69 and in '70. I got, really engineered the introduction of what is now the Metro River Protection Act that protects the riverbanks, floodplains, et cetera, along the corridor from the dam down to Atlanta. And probably have resulted in bringing about $100 million to the Atlanta area to protect lands along the Chattahoochee. And I think we need to do more, because the good Lord is not making any more. So anything you can do in that regard, protecting floodplains, buying more park property, please proceed in that direction. Thanks.
Always good to see you. Thank you for your comments. All right, now we're moving to the consent agenda. And I move to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. But before I get a second, could we just scroll through? There we go. So everybody sees what we're going to be seconding here and voting on. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence. Now, on to the regular agenda, and we start with, Rob, would you like to come up and do the honors?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure this morning to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that we appoint Ms. Erica Parrish as our Transportation Agency Director. Ms. Parrish was one of four finalists that we interviewed for the position by our committee. Overwhelmingly, I think the committee selected or recommended Ms. Parrish, and I concurred with the recommendation. I think that Ms. Parrish, in her role as interim director as well as deputy director, has proven to be a very resourceful manager, but more importantly, very open-minded, very communicative, and very accessible to myself and the board. So I'm pleased to recommend her appointment, Mr. Chairman.
So with that, I'm pleased to recommend to the board that we approve Ms. Erica Parrish to be the new Director of Cobb County, Director of Transportation.
Second.
Second.
Everybody seconds.
And with that, I'll call a question. It passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence. And I'd like to have, I'd like to have Erica come up, and her husband Jason is here, along with their children Jonah, Abby, and Sam. They'd all come up too, please.
Yes, let's go.
I'm going to go down there and be with her.
Erica, this is your day.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm really excited. I'm thankful for the opportunity, and I just hope that I can continue to help Cobb DOT and the county grow and just continue to expect the best that we have.
My son had one exactly the same.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Thank you.
With that, you get to get back to work.
Wow. Well, I'll get with the county clerk on that. All right, we'll go on to the regular agenda, starting with our new Director of Transportation. Erica, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman, again. We have 12 items that we'd like to present for consideration this morning. And the first one is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $325,344.40 for Nichols Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $394,135.30 for Beach Haven Trail Sidewalk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $394,135.30 for Beach Haven Trail Sidewalk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $30,967.45 for drainage system repairs on Devon Millway.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One to the Contract with Accelerah Construction, LLC, a no-cost time extension through December 4th, 2018, for Wesley Chapel Road Sidewalk.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings in one parcel on Wendy Hill Road, Terrell Mill Road's connector, and adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One, Two, to the Contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a no-cost time extension through May 31st, 2019, for thoroughfare improvements on South Barrett Reliever Phase Two.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $103,025.65 for bridge replacement on Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $30,967.45 for drainage system repairs on Devon Millway.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One to the Contract with Accelerah Construction, LLC, a no-cost time extension through December 4th, 2018, for Wesley Chapel Road Sidewalk.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings in one parcel on Wendy Hill Road, Terrell Mill Road's connector, and adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $394,135.30 for Beach Haven Trail Sidewalk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $30,967.45 for drainage system repairs on Devon Millway.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One to the Contract with Accelerah Construction, LLC, a no-cost time extension through December 4th, 2018, for Wesley Chapel Road Sidewalk.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings in one parcel on Wendy Hill Road, Terrell Mill Road's connector, and adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One, Two, to the Contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a no-cost time extension through May 31st, 2019, for thoroughfare improvements on South Barrett Reliever Phase Two.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $103,025.65 for bridge replacement on Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
It slipped off, sir.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Baldwin Paving, Inc., in a savings to the project in the amount of $84,031.39 for thoroughfare improvements on Cobb Parkway, US 41, State Route Three, the Cedar Crest Road, Altrich Church Road.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Certainly. If you don't mind, we've had several that resulted in savings. Could you enlighten the public where the savings will go?
It will stay in those components of the SLOSS book, so we'll continue to utilize those funds in thoroughfare improvements or intersection improvements.
For additional projects of that type, correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG program, application for FY19 to the Georgia Department of Transportation for a resurfacing contract for the resurfacing of county-maintained roads, Project Number X2909.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay. And our last item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvement Program funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Auction Sales Tax, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions for the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program budget and schedule provided under separate cover.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish.
Good morning, Jimmy.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our first item this morning is for the Board to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to construct the new Parks Inventory Control Building. All specified construction has been completed, and the new building is now operational at our complex on County Services Parkway. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one for $21,472.39 to the contract with Osprey Management, LLC, for the construction of the new Parks Inventory Control Building under the 2011 Parks SLOSS Program.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Director, would you tell us a little bit about what that building is and what it does, and how it's affecting our productivity, I guess.
Yes, sir. We have 90 different properties spread around the county that house our parks, and of those, probably 60 of those are actually parks that are developed. Well, obviously, whenever we need to buy, whether it be toilet paper, or cleaning supplies, or anything for those restrooms or buildings, we buy it in bulk by the tractor-trailer load. Therefore, we get a better price, and it's shipped into our Inventory Control Building, and then our staff can go into the asset management system, do an SRQ, and order their supplies, and then come pick them up from our Inventory Control. So it allows us to save money, but we also do our own distribution of our products.
Perfect. And I know you've got a new headquarters there as well, and going to have a grand opening. Can you tell us that date?
Yes, sir. November 29th, from 11 to 11 to 2. We'll be doing an open house. No program. Everybody just stop by, have some warm apple cider, and tour the new, the new Parks Headquarters. The last one we had was built in the early '70s. It had the nice fashionable brown paneling walls, but it has gone to the landfill now, and we have a nice modern office.
Thank you. Congratulations. Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Our next item is for the Board to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one for the addition of the rubberized surfacing to existing concrete walking tracks. All work on these projects have been completed, and we're receiving excellent feedback from our residents on how much they like the new surface, saving their knees and their shins. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one for $10,150 to the Contract with Baynon Sports Surfaces Incorporated for the addition of rubberized surfacing to the concrete walking tracks at Mud Creek Soccer Complex, Hurt Road Park, and Sweetwater Park under the 2016 Parks SLOSS Program.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I am happy to support this with pleasure, as being one of those persons in the county that have used it and feel like I could run for the rest of my life. I do have a question about the surface. Can bikes or other wheeled items be used on it?
We ask that they not be. It's not going to tear it up, but they're really for walkers, and especially the knobby-tired bicycles. When they start flying around it, it could shorten the life of it.
All right, I guess we'll take that for saving our knees. With that, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
And our final item this morning is for the Board to approve the final closeout documents and change order number one for the preparation of the Cobb Parks Master Plan. All work on this project has been completed, and the Board accepted the plan earlier this year. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one for $4,384.76 to the Contract with Loson Associates Incorporated for the preparation of the Cobb Parks Master Plan under the 2016 SLOSS Program.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Rod in absence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. And now, public safety.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, and County Manager. I kind of like the way the new DOT Director did it, but I don't think you're going to let me do it on this one, so I'll give a little bit of background. The, coming today to ask, approve an agreement with the Cobb County Board of Education, Cobb County State Court Clerk, and American Traffic Solutions Doing Businesses, Vera Mobility, for the continuation of an automated enforcement program for school bus warning devices, device violations pursuant to OCGA Section 40-6-163. As y'all know, 2012, we had our initial five-year agreement. That went well. In December of '17, we looked, the Board approved an additional one year with knowing that state legislation was making some changes to the law that was going to impact our court, particularly the State Court Clerk, and they would now have to be a party of any agreement moving forward. So on September 11th of 2018, the Board authorized the additional personnel for both the State Court Clerk and the positions at the Solicitor's Office, along with a one-time fund of $65,000 for additional equipment that they would need to process the new violation citations. So our initial term now for the new agreement is a five-year term. The State Court Clerk will The State Court Clerk will remit, remit all monies collected to the County's General Fund, and the County will make the required distributions in accordance with the agreement. Those positions that were funded and associated with this are dependent upon this agreement and the funds coming in as we anticipate. If they do not, those positions would be deleted upon exhaustion, exhaustion of the funds, so. Therefore, I'm asking the Board of Commissioners, approve an agreement with Cobb County Board of Education, Cobb County State Court Clerk, and American Traffic Solutions doing business as Vera Mobility for the School Bus Safety Camera System Service Agreement in a form substantially similar and as approved by the County's Attorney's Office, authorize the necessary budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, and Director, thank you very much for your and your staff for all the hard work. This has been a long process to get it done and done it right, and I think we finally figured out how to do it and look forward to implementing. So again, thank you, and motion to approve.
Okay, I'd just like to make one comment. During the back and forth about this issue, it was a meeting one day up at the, when doing agenda prep, where I've probably said some things that were misunderstood, and, and I wanna apologize to Angie Davis in her office about my comments. They were never meant to be, they came out wrong. I just cannot say enough about how much she and her, she, under her leadership, what they've done there, but I just wanna clear the air here that I, I, I cannot think of a more, a more professional person than Angie, what she does for that office. People have no idea the administrative burden that they do down there, and I just wanna, you know, say, say right here from the podium and on to the people out there that have unremitted admiration for Angie and for her team, and thank you, thank them for all that they do for this county to, to continue to make this a safe place we can live. So with that, I call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. 911 has one item. We ask that the Board approve the 10-year Migration Assurance Plan in an amount not to exceed $7,475,000 with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for infrastructure replacement, asset management, and feature upgrades associated with the 800 megahertz radio system core replacement from the 2016 SPOS Countywide Improvements Tier One Program Funds, authorize the budget transfers, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Director. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning again. Coming to you for the recommendation, the Board of Commissioners authorize a spending of 2016 SPOS Countywide Improvement Funds in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for the parking lot project at Animal Services, Project X1062, authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Commissioner Burl.
There, there is no lighting with this project. I did check on that, and quite honestly, we haven't had a request for lighting for this proj, I mean, so, but that's something we'll continue to evaluate. Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence. And now, Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. We have two agenda items. The first agenda item deals with housing bonds for a tax, multi-family notes for affordable housing projects in Cobb County. From time to time, our housing authorities work on new projects to build new affordable housing in Cobb County. They allow them to do this with the private sector. Since they are an authority, they don't need to go through the land entitlement process. What the Board has asked staff to put together is a policy that would provide some type of notification to surrounding property owners, much like a zoning case would be, in order to make sure they're aware of what's happening in their neighborhoods. So what we have put together here, Mr. Chairman, is a policy that would, for, for new construction of affordable housing through housing authorities, that they would hold at least one public information meeting, at least 30 days' notice being provided to them, that letters go out to property owners within, sorry, the 30-day notice is prior to the Board considering approving the multi-family note. Let me clarify that, please. That they, that property owners within 1,000 feet of the project receive a letter at least 15 days prior to the public information meeting, that it kinda describes what the project is, when the public information meeting is, so people are aware of what is happening there, and that all of that would kinda be created as a written record with sign-in sheets and comments from the community that would come to Community Development, so we'll have it available to the Board if questions come up during the approval of the multi-family note. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask if you would please approve this policy and allow for this policy to go into effect for construction of new affordable housing with our housing authorities when they request multi-family notes.
Commissioner Burl.
Yes, we've, we have the revised sheet, and after discussion yesterday, I think this makes it a little clearer, and I make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second. Just thank you, Chairman, for your leadership on this.
And I think the reason we did this is that we're just trying to give the public, to ensure the public has the opportunity to address any issue of this nature, and give them the time to, 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 to hear about it, and then, just importantly, to have the time to get back to us at the Board with their comments, so we can make a better informed decision. So with that, I call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go into the next agenda item, I just wanted to thank the Mayor of the Housing Authority and the Cobb County Housing Authority. They do really fantastic work of trying to help the people of great need in our county, and I just wanted to let them know what the, we appreciate what you do for our community members and just thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for those comments, Dana.
The second agenda item, sir, we are asking the Board to approve, authorize the Chairman to execute a variance application for a piece of county-owned property at 1,200 Ernest Barrett Parkway. We are in the process of reviewing this particular piece of property, possibly for, for sale, and as part of the discussions, they asked that a variance be provided for the front setback of this particular property. The front setback needs a variance because due to some road widenings over the course of time, the front setback that was 50 feet is now down to 20 feet. That is greater than what staff can do as administrator of variance, so we're asking the Board to please sign the application to authorize us to submit this to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance hearing, sir.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you, Dana, and I'm glad to see this coming forward. Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a second? And Commissioner Weatherford has a question.
Can you explain to them why we're doing it on behalf of ourselves instead of the new owner when they acquire the property and if, when they do that?
Because we won't, because I don't think the property will actually sell unless we get this variance done.
That's a very good reason.
We own it.
Which is, I know we own it, but I'm asking, usually zoning comes before the owner, not from ourselves.
But since we're the current owner and this is kind of one of the conditions of sale, it's one of the things that we have to address.
Good, okay, thank you.
So you're not gonna ask why we can't move the road?
I know. And I'm, I'm well aware of the property and all that, so it seems like we had it backwards a little bit.
All right, any other current discussion? I call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Do we have any more, uh, uh, public comments?
Yes, Monica Delancy.
Okay, Monica, welcome. Where are you? We've missed you. Well, this is the end. It's always good to have you here, Monica. Please. How's your daughter doing?
Wonderful. She's getting ready to come home for Thanksgiving.
Wow, already?
Already, right? She said it took so long, though. Thank you. I just came in. Good morning. Monica Delancy, Riverside Community. Just want to thank all our veterans for their service and also congratulate all of our returning elected officials to start out the 2019 year, but I just want to bring some highlights for the Riverside Community on the 2018 review. If you turn in your page, you see you have, um, um, community cleanups. I want to thank all of our, we've helped clean up not only Riverside Parkway along with Ostell Community Task Force, but we adopted side of Blair's Bridge, and we also helped clean up Premier Lane and also around the schools. As you can see, you see Mr. Murphy and also Mr. Boyd featuring in some of our pictures, so thank you for helping out with our community cleanups. We Thriving Riverside Rental Association also hosts community meetings. We are hosted, we host quarterly meetings as well as meetings, emergency meetings, if you say, but our next scheduled meeting for the community will be November 19, and it'll be at Premier Learning Academy. Again, we have to bring back our Cobb Legal Aid to come in and present that meeting. Also, we have here, of course, we have our National Night Out Against the Crime event, which is our signature event for the community. Thank you again for those who partake in our event. And the next page, I want to congratulate, um, next page, our Pearl Brook High School marching band. They will be going to Chicago for Thanksgiving. Pearl Brook High School is our anchor school for the Riverside Ostell Mappleton Community, so congratulations to Mr. Travis Joshua, who's the principal, as well as Mr. Kirk Dollar, Mr. Wimberly, for the band directors who will take 140 students and 40 volunteers next week to Chicago. So if you have their emails sent out, the congratulations, I think they'd still need some donations. I'm not here to speak on that. I'm just here to just highlight some of the success stories that's going on in our community. So again, congratulations to Pearl Brook High School marching band for marching in 2018 Chicago Thanksgiving Maces Parade. So this brings us to areas of concerns for Riverside Parkway area. On this picture, you see, at the top, we've got some concerns about, on the corners, City View and Riverside Parkway, no, no turning signal. Then also, you see here, Riverside Parkway and Premier Lane, there's issues with the median obstructs the view, and there have been multiple accidents reported. And then you have no turning signal at the bottom on the corner of Factory Shows and Riverside Parkway. So I do want to congratulate Ms. Parrish for her new position, but this is some of some issues we'll be working on with the community. Also, just want to remind about the housing concerns that is taking place not only in Riverside Community but countywide. Housing concerns, there was an article written in the Mary Daily Journal, and I provided that for you, so you can review, but I spoke at a forum about a month ago on this issue, and again, like, I just, I know I sent out an email about two weeks ago. Cobb County Magic Court hears 100 cases on Tuesdays and Fridays of the month, and every week. And I think one Friday, there was 170 cases that was heard. And also, other upcoming events, the Riverside Neighborhood Appreciation, thank you, sir, will be December 10th to the 15th, and I want to close that out. Thank you for letting me share, and I have some extra ideas to share with you as well.
Thank you, Monica. Always, we always appreciate your civic involvement. You're making a difference.
Thank you.
You might, you might wanna give one of those copies to Erica. All right, we have a, a number of appointments that the Board has to, to vote on. The first one is to approve the reappointment of Karen Halcy to Development Authority of Cobb County, and I make a motion, I make a motion to approve that reappointment. Has read?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence. And now, Commissioner Cupid, you have an appointment.
Thank you, Chairman. I am seeking the Board's appointment of Vanessa Drayton to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? And it passes four to zero with Commissioner Odenabsence. And then I want to announce one of my appointments, Marty Williamson, to the 1% Special Purpose Local Auction Sales Tax Oversight Committee. I didn't see Marty when I came in. Is he here? Okay, he's probably already at work. And Commissioner Burl, you have an appointment. Right.
Yes, I would like to announce the appointment of Jeff Sowther to the Transit System Advisory Board, and Jeff is here today, if you'd like to stand, be recognized. And thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yeah, I'll just stay with you for Commissioner comments.
My first announcement is just to thank you to everyone who participated in our elections last Tuesday. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for re-electing me. Also, this Saturday at, at SunTrust Park, Kennesaw State University will play Jacksonville State Jaguars, and tickets are on sale at www.braves.com/ksu. Go Owls. And last but not least, many of you know about my program that I initiated two years ago, Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets, and in line with Veterans Day this past Sunday, I wanted to present some pictures. There's actually three boards, Eddie, if you don't mind kinda stacking them up, or above and below, maybe. We have had 70 adoptions from the Shelter for Veterans, and these just are just some of the snapshots of the folks, the veterans that came out, picked out a dog or a cat, and took home their new best friend from the Cobb County Animal Shelter. This program wouldn't be available to our veterans without the generosity and support from Jay Cunningham and Superior Plumbing, who donated the money for the free adoptions. And it just warms my heart to see that the dogs and cats get, get a good home and that it helps with therapy and PTSD for our veterans. So, thank you all. Their forms in the back, if any veterans are here and would like to take home their new best friend, you can get, just show up at the animal shelter, Cobb County Animal Shelter, and pick out your new best friend. Thank you. I'm, I'm done.
I know. I didn't know what to say either.
One more thing.
There you go.
Congratulations, Erica. We're proud of you. You've always been accessible and very thorough and detailed in your responses to us and, and to our citizens, and we're happy to have you at the helm.
Good, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Then I have a lot other than next week is Thanksgiving, and I'm sure everyone will be spending time with their families, and there's not a lot of activities going on, so appreciate that, and I think this is our last meeting, official meeting, other than zoning before Thanksgiving, so I wish everybody a, a merry, and happy Thanksgiving, and see you in December.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, there's a lot to share. Want to thank Eric Parrish for your service, and we're excited for you and your new role. On the heels of Veterans Day, yesterday I learned that our veterans facility in Ostell may be closing by some emails and calls that I received. I'm hoping that some follow-up that we have here at the county will give us more concrete information and that the word that we're getting out to the area will help in, in stopping what could be a valuable facility for those that access veterans services via our bus line in Ostell. for those that access veterans services via our bus line and Osteo Road. I will be sending additional information out as I receive it. This past weekend, I had opportunity to participate in an HOA boot camp, and it was spearheaded by Commissioner Arrington in Fulton County. And for the four years that he's done the program, he has been going to different local municipalities in the metro area to help educate people on HOA law and practices. And I was shocked to see on Saturday that the greatest county representation was from Cobb County. And bittersweet moment of that is reflective of the opportunity to learn, but also a lot of the challenges that come with people who are put in positions of leadership for HOAs without necessarily having the best training for it. But it's good to see that we're coming together and we have the ability to partner and learn from each other through that program. We also had a Cobb 101 graduate who was there as well and spoke highly of the program and how it's helped him in managing his HOA, which has over 1,000 homes. That's a plug for the Cobb 101 program that we have here. We've had a lot of good events occur here in the county as well. One of them was Keep Cobb Beautiful's event that they had over the weekend for recycling items at Jim Miller Park. And want to thank KCB for all of their hard work in serving Cobb County. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, there are a couple of things I wanted to share with the public. There is a special food box that's available for those that are seeking assistance in obtaining food for Thanksgiving, and that is through King's Foods. And you can see information for that on my past newsletter, you can reach out to my office for additional information. And also one of our board appointees, Carolyn Turner, helps organize a Feed the Hungry Day event every Thanksgiving. And her event will be held this year on Saturday, November 17th, and it will be held at Hope Family Resource Center off of Mableton Parkway, and please reach out to our office if you would like more information for that. Leading into Christmas, there's certainly a very festive environment, but it's also a time that highlights needs in our community. And one way we help to assist those with needs is in partnering with Cobb Senior Services, which does its annual senior Santa party, but there's also opportunity to adopt a senior through Cobb Senior Services, which I think is an excellent program. And hope that you reach out to the Cobb, to Cobb County Senior Services to see how you can assist with those events. Lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't share, South Cobb Arts Alliance is holding its 34th Annual Christmas House at the Mable House Arts Center, and that's going to be starting November 29th, and, or at least the preview party is November 29th. And it'll be open to the public between the 30th and through December 9th. And there'll be a lot of exhibitors, hope you bring your wallet and Christmas cheer for that event, it's always a lot of fun every year. And finally, every year Cobb County partners with Cobb NAACP to recognize Martin Luther King's contributions. And they are having auditions for their annual January event, and that will take place on Saturday, December 8th, Saturday, December 15th, and also Thursday, June 3rd. And different acts are invited, whether it be in dance, spoken word, or folk and musical performances. And the actual event will be on Monday, January 21st. So that concludes my comments today Chairman.
Commissioner? And I just have, this today's the day for Erica. Cobb County was recently selected by the Georgia Partnership for Transportation Quality for Preconstruction Design Awards, and we won, we won three of them, we were finalists in five of the nine categories, but we won three of them. And one of them was the Covered Bridge, and that won for context-sensitive planning and design, including public participation.
They did an excellent job on that, and it's still standing.
The second one was the category six was the Traffic Safety and or Intersection Design. And of course, this is the South Barrett Parkway Reliever Phase Three. And if you haven't had a chance to do this, as I did, I just sort of drove around in circles for about five minutes the other day. It was just, it was an amazing roundabout. It's appealing to the eye, but also really has made a big difference there. So we, we won that award, and then the last one was in category seven for Highway Design Urban. This is the Interstate North Parkway, Interstate North Circle. Again, a, just another example of the, of the staff that makes all of us in Cobb County look good. And I want to congratulate Erica and her staff, and all the people that are, and the public that participate in this for contributing to infrastructure that continues to make Cobb just a place, the choice destination for people who want to live. So with that, on behalf of the Board, I know they all join me in wishing you all a happy, happy Thanksgiving. We must be grateful for, and let's enjoy our family and our friends during this holiday season. So with that, we're adjourned.